I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Mr. Paulson, will you lead us in the pledge? Are there any modifications to the agenda?
I have just one thing, if it's okay with the board. The two oral reports, the student learning feature, follow-up to federal funding and learning acceleration, and the social emotional learning feature, I'd like to flip the order on them. Reasoning for that is just, I think there's some context in the social emotional feature that I think will put a little bit of sense to then the grant funding piece. So if it's okay, I'd just like to flip the order of those.
Do we have to?
I don't think. We're not really modifying.
Um, comments from the Board President. I just want to welcome, it's our first Board meeting with our newest Board members, Mrs. Blatner and Mrs. Uboa, and welcome to, welcome to the Board. Um, we do have one public comment tonight, so I will read our opening. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the Board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The Board is not to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board policy, we have allocated 30 minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject may be limited to 20 minutes. The Board may shorten the time allocation for each person to less than three minutes to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. To preserve confidentiality, the Board and its President request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments and raise his hand at the three-minute mark, and we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to the members of the Board or staff. We have one speaker tonight, Joey Camp, talking about PTA donations.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Joey Camp. I am in the district. I noticed an agenda item this evening regarding a facility project with the Johnson Elementary PTA. In lieu of that, I'd like to speak on another opportunity with Lincoln Elementary School. And I represent a passionate group of parents who are taking on the task of fundraising to build a new playground at Lincoln Elementary. Lincoln's current playground is 30 years old and is in desperate need of repair. We've learned that playground equipment is generally built to last around 15 years, and Lincoln's play structures are now twice that age. We're in the early stages of fundraising and have employed a GoFundMe page, a Queen of Hearts raffle, and have partnered with several food trucks that have agreed to donate a portion of their sales toward our playground. To date, we've probably raised just shy of $20,000, which puts us at around 10% of our overall goal. Community support has been extremely high, but we're immediately asked, why do Lincoln families have to pay for the new playground? As Board members may or may not be aware, District 200 policy dictates that funding for a new playground rests on the shoulders of each school's parents and community leaders. This clearly poses a long list of challenges. Efforts to replace Lincoln's playground have gone back upwards of 10 years now. Families who took the lead on fundraising inevitably aged out of the school, and most often no one continued fundraising efforts. The cycles continue to today when a group of us have decided to take up the cause yet again. This also quickly becomes an equity issue. One out of three children at Lincoln come from a low-income family that are not able to donate toward a new playground. We believe that all children should have access to a safe, fun outdoor play space. Studies show that physical activity on a playground helps improve their attention in class, decreases stress and anxiety, and prepares students to learn. This benefit will be paramount as we transition all students, both currently in-person and those learning virtually, back to a more normal school day. So to conclude, we're asking for help. That hope could come in the form of a donation. That help could come from connecting us with civic and leaders and elected officials. And we also ask that you reconsider the current policy to help fund a new playground at Lincoln and any other schools that have a similar need in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. Um, we did not receive any public comments in writing ahead of time, so we can move on to the superintendent report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. A couple of things that I wanted to share with the Board this evening underneath my report. We are quickly approaching the end of the school year, especially for our high school seniors, and so that involves a number of opportunities that are in front of us over the next couple of weeks. Obviously, our buildings have been hard at work preparing the in-person graduations that are going to take place on each of our football fields. Opportunities we're incredibly excited about, especially with the partnership with Delac, who's going to help us in some of the production, because we still, while it's an in-person opportunity, we're also going to be live streaming that opportunity to ensure access for everybody. One of the other opportunities coming up is that this Saturday at Wheaton-Warrenville South, they will have Tiger Palooza. It's kind of a prom-like afternoon and evening that'll include a number of different activities at the building. There's a post-promish act takes place that evening. And then next week, a week from Saturday, will be Falcon Palooza, very similar to Tiger Palooza, just the other side of the town, obviously, at Wheaton North. With the planning and support of our two activities directors, those evenings will conclude with fireworks display at each of the the high schools on that Saturday night. We had to get special approval or permission to be able to include a fireworks display in that, and so the City of Wheaton and the Police Department have asked us to make sure that we do give notification to the community about the fact that the fireworks display is happening. Actually, it was in a city newsletter I just saw that came out, and so they indicated that us sharing it this way via the Board meeting, and then Mrs. Laikano will follow up in the Board notes, right, with that notification as well, does make sure that we're providing that notification. So that's coming, exciting, good opportunity. I want to mention to the Board that today, with School Nurse Appreciation Day, we had an opportunity to go visit each of our schools today to thank our health office staff. We've got incredible health office staff in any school year, but I think as the Board is certainly aware, this has been a heavy lift year, certainly in our health offices, as they've taken on new protocols around contact tracing, as they've redefined protocols many times. They have been incredibly instrumental in our ability to ensure that we could adhere to the principles that were in all of our core reopening plans around safety and making sure that students remain safe. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank our nurses publicly and our health office staff publicly for really an incredible lift this year, and special shout-out or mention to Sue Vasco, who is the Department Chair of our Health Services Department. I joked that for the first five years in the district, I knew Sue. We had, you know, a fair number of interactions around kind of policy or department issues, but over the last 16 months, I've really gotten to know Sue as we've worked through a whole lot of of plans, and really, she's done an incredible job for you and for the district as well. So wanted to mention that. Kind of in that vein, so one of the things that the Health Department has helped us do this year is to execute our contact tracing protocols. We have experienced, I think, as the Board is well aware, some challenges as the physical distancing, especially in our middle schools, shrank from six feet to less than six feet. Obviously, it's part of the effort to get kids back on a daily basis into our buildings. Candidly, we're doing remarkably well in terms of the work that we're doing, but we've had over 100 kids that have been quarantined as a result of that classroom definition, and so we've continued to advocate for some adjustment to those protocols. It's happened in a couple of ways. One, we recently helped to draft a letter with, I did with the help of a few colleagues, actually, in other counties, that drafted a letter that we sent to Dr. Ayala, who's the State Superintendent and the Illinois Association of School Boards. We sent that to IDPH, and we sent it to Deputy Governor Ruiz to his office, again advocating for change. Candidly, our rationale behind that is that there is a lot of support in the updated guidance that's come out recently about the safety of students being three feet in a classroom, especially with all of the other mitigations that are at play, and it just seems like there is, there clearly is a lack of alignment between the contact tracing and those guidelines. And so as we drafted that letter, all DuPage County superintendents signed on to that letter. Actually, a number of the counties around us took a very similar version of that letter and had all of their superintendents sign on to it, so I think there's a version of that letter that's come from, I think, at least four other counties that's moved on. And then today, Mrs. Vasco and I actually drafted a communication to the DuPage County Health Department, even advocating that we would like to, we'd be willing to pilot some type of modified protocol. We're keeping incredibly detailed data on every student that is a close contact in our classrooms. We have not seen any situations where any of our close contacts have become positive cases, and I know that bucks the, certainly, the trends that the Health Department has seen, but again, I think we are looking at it in a very different context of a school building with all of the other protocols. So I cannot promise that there will be change in that this school year, but we felt it important to continue the advocacy around that, so that hopefully we will see some adjustment moving forward. And then finally, just two other things that I wanted to mention. It's been a while since the Board has heard me share an update on our business incubator programs at the high school, but I actually had an opportunity today to meet with a student from Wheaton North, who's actually a part of an incubator team that actually is working in their second year within the program. They took the business incubator class last year and wanted to continue working on their project this year. The focus of their project actually was in developing a book that would help to support young men and women students who are experiencing colorblindness and want to kind of learn some practical ways to be able to kind of navigate the environment around them, and so the students actually developed a book, and Leo brought me a copy of the book, as I met with him, and I've actually ordered six copies of it. I wanted to be the first to purchase, I don't know if I was actually the first to purchase the book, but I bought six copies of the book that I'm sending on to some of our elementary schools to preview and give a little bit of feedback to the team. Again, I think, as we've often said, it's really the the process of design thinking, an incubator that really is phenomenal for a lot of the future-ready skills that we're focused on. So anyway, I brought a copy tonight. I'll send it around if you want to take a look through it at some point during the meeting. And then second thing I just wanted to mention is one of, so the Board, I think, had an opportunity a few years back to meet Team Allergenius. They were actually the winners of a national pitch competition as a result of their experience, and one of the students from Team Allergenius sent an email update, actually, to our incubator adult team and said they're still at work. They're still a company. They've actually secured some additional funding as a result of a college pitch competition, and so they've got renewed passion and interest, and their business is still going, even as they continue to learn in college. So just I wanted to share those two updates, and I think that's it.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
If the public wanted to know more about the book, how would they find out about it?
That's a great question. I don't, off the top of my head, have their website. I do know that they have a website where they're keeping their information, but I will get that. But yeah, thank you for asking that. I did actually suggest, one of the things I suggested to Leo, especially with the copies that we bought for schools, would be, it'd be great to have like a barcode sticker inside the front cover of their book with a link back to their website that has additional resources on how this could be used as an instructional or learning tool. I think it'd be a nice opportunity. But I'll send this around.
I have one comment for, well, first of all, Dr. Schuler, thank you for the advocacy with those letters to IDPH and DuPage County. I don't know if it would be helpful or not, but with the one with, for DuPage County that you sent today with the offering to be a pilot district, I don't know if the Board agrees with that, that I'm wondering, would it be helpful if a letter was sent from the Board of Education supporting that idea? If we have a short discussion and see if we can support that idea, but I'm just wondering if you think that would be helpful, or is that implied because you've sent it? I don't know.
Yeah, hard to say. I don't think it would hurt, certainly, you know, whether it it proved to kind of move us further, but I don't think it would hurt to communicate on that.
I think it's a good idea, like, to, you know, put our names on it, and, you know, I think any advocacy that we can have would be good. As you know, I had mentioned before that this Thursday, 13th, DuPage County Health Department has their Board meeting, and they do welcome public comments, so you can submit a public comment online. I'm just advocating for that, but I had a question about the pilot program. Do you have like a plan for that protocol, like what it would look like?
Yeah, I know that Mrs. Vasco's thought through that. I think her interest would be in proposing to them that we really up our symptom monitoring for the students, so assuming that the students who would have been deemed close contacts and not able to return to school during that quarantine, if we allowed them to come back to school, but did a more active, like, symptom monitoring and screening on them, I think that's really her thought process around it, that it's just important to make sure that at the first sign of any potential symptom, that we can move quickly to to exclude it as soon if we need to. But I think that's kind of the focus she's thinking about.
Any other questions or comments? So if we wanted to draft a letter, we obviously can't vote on that because that's not an agenda item. Can we do a straw poll to see if we wanted the Board to?
Yeah, I would think if you want to designate somebody to work with me on the letter, I think Mr. Booton has offered to kind of help to draft. It's going to be very similar to what it is that we sent, so I'd be happy to work with with Mrs. Booton to draft that, and then I think you can just send it out to Board members to make sure everybody's comfortable with the language that's in there, and I think you could do it that way.
Anyone have any concerns with that?
Who would we send that letter to?
I think the thought is the DuPage County Health Department. That's really where this most recent advocacy has been directed, and again, if we can do that relatively quickly, even tomorrow, you might be able to get it in time for their meeting, or you could deliver the the letter even via public comment at their meeting.
Oh, I was just going to say, if we can get that drafted tomorrow, we can circulate it through some other some other local large school districts in DuPage County. I can get them to maybe sign off on it, too.
Okay. I have a meeting tomorrow, actually. You can do that, so, at 3:00, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll do it first thing in the morning, depending on when we get out here tonight, we'll do it tonight, so.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Following items have been listed on our consent agenda. Acceptance of a gift to Washington Elementary School. Approval of AP Human Geography textbook. Approval of AP Statistics textbook. Approval of Culinary Art I and II textbook. Approval of elementary Spanish Language Arts curriculum. Approval of Project Lead the Way Gateway Upgrade Kits. Approval of Snack Vending Contract Services proposal. Approval of truck leases. Approval to purchase electronic message center for Johnson Elementary School. Approval of IHSA annual renewal. Approval of resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Approval of treasurer's bond coverage. Approval of the resolution designating depositories. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of Minutes, May 4th, 2021, Special Board Reorganization Meeting, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to December 2019 as allowable by law. Approval of Personnel Report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items Board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any information?
Yeah, just two quick comments that I wanted to make. Number one, just a huge thank you. There are a couple of gifts that the Board is is accepting this evening, the gift, obviously, to Washington Elementary School, and candidly, with the purchase of the electronic message center at Johnson, that's being made possible thanks to, about half of it is being funded either by the PTA or a private donor that has made that opportunity available. I think there was a question from the Board after the packet went out. That actually is a similar process that we've used on two other recent signboard projects at Wheaton-Warrenville South and at Hubble. We approach those projects through a joint effort of some district funding, some PTA private funding for the signboards, and for a couple of reasons. We, of course, have a signboard in front of each school. The electronic signboards are a little bit more elaborate than some of the signs that we've put in, and so we've approached those through a joint venture. Secondly, I just wanted to mention there are a couple of purchases of instructional materials this evening, and you're going to see both in a couple of these purchases, and as we get to the grant funding item a little bit later, again, one of the kind of unplanned benefits of COVID year is we move forward our one-to-one project a year in front of when we had planned to do that, and so one of the things that we just need to make sure that we do now as we move forward is make sure that all of our instructional materials align to that, this kind of one-to-one opportunities, right, to have devices available, but not have instructional materials that can align to use on the devices does not make sense, and so what you're seeing in a couple of the upgrades tonight, and you're going to see as we move forward, is our desire to make sure that as we renew instructional materials, that they do align with formats for how kids are going to be able to consume it. Does not mean we will never use print books. We will, but if students are carrying that device and accessing resources that way, we want to make sure that we upgrade some of our materials. So happy to answer any other questions, but that's all I've got.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? If there are no other questions, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Is that Mrs. Booton?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, now on to action items. We have one action item tonight. Approval of professional services agreement between CUSD 200 and Metropolitan Family Services of DuPage. Dr. Schuler, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just two, a couple of quick comments on the front end of this. So I think as the Board is aware, but I want to share again for the benefit of the community, I believe, and this is probably with a little but I want to share again for the benefit of the community, I believe, and this is probably with a little bit of inside pride involved in this, I believe we have the best, the strongest early learning program that exists throughout our county. I believe passionately about the work that Mrs. Mangini is doing with her staff at Jefferson and at a few of the other sites that are delivering early learning opportunities. Thanks to the community and to the board, we have a facility now that equally matches the service that's happening inside of the program, and so we want to continue to move forward with our focus on making sure that students come to kindergarten ready to learn, and we take a very holistic approach to kindergarten readiness that focuses on obviously early academic skills, social emotional learning, wellness, physical wellness, emotional wellness for students, that they have developed some of the social opportunities and play-based skills that they need. The Early Learning Collaborative is something that's helped us with that focus over the last couple of years. It came to be through the very generous support of the DuPage Community Foundation that put together the seed funding for the Early Learning Collaborative, which is really an opportunity to bring together a number of the partners that are helping to support early learning across our community. So we're proud of our program, but we don't do it in a silo. We know that there are some community partners that help us in that effort. The DuPage Community Foundation was very clear at the onset of the Early Learning Collaborative and their funding, that they didn't intend to be the funder of that forever. They intended to provide the seed funding and at some point find their exit out of the Early Learning Collaborative, and so the recommendation that's in front of you is really, it's the continuation of a program that exists. So this is not enhancing or adjusting the services of the Early Learning Collaborative. It's just shifting the funding model that we are picking up as a school district, the portion that has been previously and generously covered by grants. So we knew that this was coming. In fact, it's probably come a few years after we had actually anticipated it coming. The DuPage Community Foundation stayed in for I think a little bit longer than they even originally anticipated, and so we are pleased to make this recommendation to you tonight. This is, I think, critically important as we look at the long-term progression of students to really focus on the starting point at kindergarten readiness, right? What we're doing with kids, birth to age five.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I just wanted to say I think this is a great investment for us to do. I remember talking to Mrs. Mangini about this a couple of years ago, and it's such a wonderful resource for our district and really helps to make sure our kiddos are ready and to enter school, and I think this is such a worthwhile investment for the district to make, and I just want to, you know, express my, you know, strong support for this, and it's such a great opportunity. Just the only quick question I saw in the contract that is there, it said that there'll be meeting minutes and things like that. Is there like a website or something where that those are, that when they have their meetings and stuff, like will that, do we need to go find them, or those can those be shared with us?
No, we can provide those to you. I know, actually, Mrs. Mangini, were the minutes from any of the collaborative meetings where they maintain?
We can go ahead and get those meeting minutes for you. It's not on the website, but we do have them internally, so we can provide those to you.
Yeah, just going forward, I don't mean.
Absolutely.
Just to, and it's more just to see all the wonderful things that you're doing.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have kind of one more of a personal comment, just out of transparency. Metropolitan Family Services is a client of my company, currently working on a project for them. I'm not personally working on the project. I have no personal stake or conflict of interest in this, so I'm not personally going to benefit from it. So while I thought about abstaining, as I talked to some other people, I will officially take a vote, but I just wanted to be clear to the board and to the community.
Anything else? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement between CUSD 200 and Metropolitan Family Services DuPage as presented.
So moved.
Is that, who said it? Mrs. Booton? Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next up are oral reports, our social emotional learning feature. Dr. Solagi?
Yep. All right, good evening, members of the Board of Education. Thanks always for the opportunity to talk about social emotional learning, not only for you but for our community. This evening, my social emotional learning feature is going to dig a little bit deeper than just a story about a particular school or a particular strategy that we're implementing, but I think it's timely that we actually highlight SEL and what some of our focus areas are as we go into next school year, as we've been talking about our Learning Acceleration Plan and some of those pieces. I think it's really important that we make mention and recognize the importance of social emotional learning, especially as we move into next school year and close this school year out. So tonight, I intend to highlight areas of our framework and specific focus areas or priority areas that we'll be implementing next school year. But I'm going to start us with our SEL framework, just as a refresher, and I've included this in your packets as well, but it's been a while since we've talked about our SEL framework, but really, as we started this work and this deep work three years ago, we started by collaboratively developing a vision for social emotional learning with a collective leadership team comprised of teachers, specialists, and administrators, EC all the way through 12th grade, and we wanted a framework that was rooted in research, but also supported by organizational beliefs, and that's what you'll see in the framework, and it's comprehensive, right? So it fully represents the vastness of SEL, but also seeks to fully define what SEL is. It's more than just a skill or a curriculum. It values the entire experience and skills that kids should get through the social emotional learning process. And lastly, our framework's a capacity builder. So as I talk tonight about the various areas in our framework, it's about continuing to build upon successes we've already had, but also adding depths, depth to strategies that we've already implemented or are ongoing in our schools. So that's some of the pieces around the framework. I'm going to dive in, and in each area, I'm going to talk about some of our priority areas for 2021, 2022. So I'm going to start with relationships. You know that this is the heart of our framework and the heart of social emotional learning. Our organizational belief is really around that every kid should have a trusted adult in school. One, we know when kids have a trusted adult in school, we increase school connectedness, which increases student achievement and engagement and decreases all of our emotional stressors. While it is not a new strategy, it will certainly be a key priority of ours to implement trusted adult relationship mapping at the elementary, middle, and high school levels next year. This work is always focused around in trying or working towards the goal of ensuring that every child has a trusted adult in our school. So what is relationship mapping? If you can remember back, we've looked at this potentially in the past. It's as simple as really asking or seeking from our kids, do you have a trusted adult in your school, and who is that, right? And then proactively responding to build authentic relationships with students who don't have a trusted adult, right? As we go into next year, this will also be a part of our school improvement process as we think about relationship mapping in the SEL factor, because it is such a high priority of ours. As we move down and we think about relationships and connections with kids, a key strategy that will help support that is by expanding the clubs and activities that we will offer next year to our students. So over the past few months, we've actually had a task force that's been comprised of folks K through 12th grade looking at the offerings around the school experience that we provide to kids through clubs and activities. And you'll also see in your packet, I've provided you with a summary of the expansion of student opportunities in our district for next year. Mrs. Murphy will also talk about it in detail too, because we intend to use some of our grant-funded dollars for this, but expanding our clubs and activities, not only at the high school and middle school level, but also unique to this is at the elementary level, where we've traditionally only offered two clubs. We intend to offer anywhere from four to six club opportunities at our elementary level. And why is this important, and how is this tied to relationships? One, it gives our kids an opportunity to connect with a potential adult that's not their classroom teacher or a teacher that they see, and with other students. So really expands those opportunities. A branch out of that work was to systematize our freshman mentoring program. So at Weeden North, they run the Link Crew. We've talked about that in the past, really is a freshman mentoring program and also a leadership opportunity for some of our students at Weeden North. As we transition into next year, at Weeden North South, they'll be running a freshman mentoring program as well, and we're going to recognize that as part of our stipend work as well. So those are some of the key focus areas around connecting with our students. Certainly not all the things we do around building relationships, but I wanted to start there. Next, I want to move on to emotional wellness. So it's important to follow relationships with the emotional wellness piece. Actually, I'm gonna, sorry, go back to behavioral wellness. Let's get this slide. So next, I'm going to move to behavioral wellness. So a few pieces here. So the organizational belief around behavioral wellness is really around providing clear expectations, but supporting those clear expectations with positive and corrective feedback, and three key strategies and practices that we'll be implementing next year that I want to highlight as part of our work. The first is foundational behavioral practice implementation. I know that's a mouthful. So just to break down, that is really about establishing and communicating clear expectations for kids to be successful in our schools, in both our classrooms and school-wide. Part of really, really establishing a culture that has really quality behavioral wellness is starting at your younger levels. If you're wondering what that really is, I've also enclosed in your packets there a look at what a foundational behavioral classroom in school is. So we're excited to implement this practice. We actually started this training pre-pandemic, and we'll be closing the loop on it at the end of this school year as we go into next school year. The other important piece around this is, is that we have teachers retiring and new teachers coming into our schools, and we can't just rely on the understanding that we know how to manage our classrooms, or that we know how to naturally connect with kids, or to naturally provide positive feedback, or to shape behaviors. So this will be significant in our work, we believe. Tied to that, while that's the foundation, we still have to recognize that our classrooms can have significant disruptions, right? And so we'll be implementing a significant disruptions protocol next year, and really what that is, it's pretty simplistic process, but it's backed by a lot of research that shows that when you can identify what significant behaviors are in a classroom or in a school, and how to respond to them, or who to contact when it is a significant disruption, you actually limit the disruption. This is not the only strategy around this, but it is one strategy, right? So not only does it clearly define the process for managing significant disruptions, but it helps to alleviate or reduce disruptions, so you can have a better learning atmosphere. These two, though, really need to work within each other. It would not be recommended to only implement a significant disruptions protocol if you didn't have a foundational behavioral practice, because the foundational piece is really at the heart of your work. District-wide, we will be investing a significant amount of time, myself and Dr. Kyle are partnering on leading crisis prevention and intervention training at all of our schools next year. That's a half-day training that all District 200 staff will take part in. It will be led by our district-wide behavioral specialists, and again, this is a proactive approach to reducing significant behavior and crisis, right? So it works on identifying that when a student may be escalating, and it's really just good, solid practice and proactive, positive practice around it, but we know that we want to invest time in that, not only so our learning atmospheres can continue to thrive, but so that we can do really good things for our kids, and not escalate, but always de-escalate our students. Another portion of our SEL framework is emotional wellness, so we all recognize that the emotional well-being of every student should be nurtured and supported. Three areas that I'm going to highlight for you as we move into next year. This year at the high school, we added emotional wellness coordinators, and their key focus was to manage all aspects of hospitalizations. As we move into next year, we'll be recommending to use some of our grant-funded dollars for two additional middle school emotional wellness coordinators, one on the south side and one on the north side. We believe that this will not only impact and help our students in need, but it will also have a building-wide impact. Reason being is, when you have one central person that is managing all aspects of hospitalizations for students, so that means managing the intake and the outtake process, managing the academic day when a student comes back, providing relief for that student, working closely with the family. When you have one central person managing that one, it's not only a good thing for the student and the family, but then our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers are also enabled or empowered to impact the rest of the building in their traditional roles, which has an impact on the social emotional piece at the school. Our emotional wellness coordinators are also responsible for signs of suicide prevention programming. This is a program that we launched this year at the high school level in ninth grade. It's a program that identifies students in need of further support by encouraging them to acknowledge, care, and tell a trusted adult when they see a friend that may be demonstrating suicidal tendencies. As we move into next year, we plan to expand this program to the grade levels above ninth grade and also into eighth grade. It is really a proactive program. We've had good success with it this year, and we believe, again, not only does it allow you to get, there's also a screening piece where it asks students if they need to talk to somebody, and allows just them that opportunity to seek somebody, if they need to seek somebody as well. So there's a preventative piece to it, but then there's also an intervention piece to it for students that are in need. And then the last piece I want to recognize is that, over the past few years, we've dedicated a lot of time to training and resources for our staff in the area, really of connecting with students, right? So connecting with students is our number-one defender to ensure emotional well-being, and so there are really three trainings that come to mind, our relationship training, our trauma-informed training, and our implicit bias training, and all of those seek to help staff to identify barriers that may be getting in the way for them to connect with students, and then utilize their background knowledge, their scheme of the things that they've learned to overcome those barriers, whether it be their own barrier or that student barrier, to help them connect. So as we move into next year, I think we're coming from a place of strength. I think our staff, our schools have always been strong, and they're in a good position to use the knowledge and the training that they've had to connect further with our kids. So learning's a part of our framework, and it should be, because the L in learning is, it stands for learning, right? But when we think about learning in the context of SEL, it's not just about the standards or the skills, right? It's not just about a scope and sequence or a direct instructional curriculum. While that is important, SEL skills are really applied and experienced in a variety of contexts, right? So next year, one, I'm excited, I know our staff is excited, to be fully committed to making sure we provide the most robust school experience for our kids, right? To make sure we're creating moments and experiences for our kids, right? And two ways we get at that. You'll see I've noted again expanded clubs and activities. The reason why this lives both in the relationship section and the learning section is because on the relationship side, it gives the opportunity to connect further, right? In the learning side, when kids are involved in a club, an activity, an extracurricular, that's a natural, organic setting for them to actually experience the skills and to work through the skills of relationship building, failure, emotional management. All those natural pieces are happening in that setting. So I do see that as a way that we are touching on the learning side of it, so that we can remove a barrier to increase our participation in those clubs and activities. We'll be recommending activity buses to be brought back at the high school as well. I've included that kind of in the roll-up of the piece on the expanded clubs and opportunities there. We have done some survey work as well with students to ask them about what barriers are there for participation, and activity buses have shown up in that area. So we think that that will provide an opportunity for us to expand participation as well. I'm going to end tonight talking about mindset, and so mindset is really, you know, a belief, a philosophy, but it's rooted in research also. When we added mindset to our social emotional framework, we really dove into Carol Dweck's work, which really focuses on the ability that if you believe and have high expectations for yourself and for others, your outcomes for yourself and for others, your outcomes many times are greater, right? And so now, as we, as we work through May and as we go into next year, I think the mindset portion organizationally for our district will be really, really important, right? That our teachers believe all students can grow at, at, at high levels, but that our students also believe that they can grow and learn no matter what they face, no matter what, what has happened as we move forward, right? That positivity piece is going to be really, really important. And I think it's great that, that we have hope as part of our framework, right? Hope and, and lifelong learning and seeing yourself as a learner are interconnected, and there's a lot of hope for our future in District 200. So I'll stop there and take any questions.
Anyone like to start?
Yeah, I'll go. On the tier-one behavioral classroom, Doc, what is, what does tier-one mean? What's the definition?
Yes, certainly. When we think about tier-one, so I'm going to break this up almost statistically. Tier-one, when you think about 80% of your students, this really means that 80 to 85% of your students should respond, respond to tier-one strategies. So whether it's behaviorally, whether it's academically, right? 85% of your students may respond to the whole group lesson, but there's still some students that are going to need maybe more instruction, more differentiation. So it's really just the foundational, general, overall practice. To create better context even for that, tier-two or tier-three would mean an intervention, personalized, one-on-one help.
Oh, oh, got it.
Right? So in, in, when we speak in those tiers, we go tier-one, tier-two, tier-three. Tier-two and tier-three, 5 to 10% of your students are going to need personalized instruction or intervention.
Thank you. I was thinking it was a capability maturity thing, and it's not. Perfect. And then on the expansion of student opportunities, there's a, I just don't understand the math. I'll just take the first one, elementary school. It says a 75 to one student ratio, and it's an additional 73-ish thousand dollars. What, what does that actually mean?
Yeah, so it is taking all of our schools, and right now, we have two club stipends per school, so 26 stipends because we have 13 schools. And then taking the student enrollments for next year and looking at the 75 to one ratio. So let's now say a school that has 300 kids now has four club stipends, right? That would just be for one school. That's the difference between there. When you look at all the schools and their enrollment, it's 73,794 for the club stipends.
Perfect, thank you. And then I just want to be consistent with what I said last meeting on the emotional wellness coordinators. I made a statement about the SA funding being used for, in a temp, what I would call, you know, relatively long period temporary funding, but used for permanent positions. And what I don't, what I don't want that to be interpreted as, and what I want to make sure we're very clear about, SA funding or not, this is something we would do. This is an incredibly important role. And so I don't, I, I would prefer not to link it, well, I understand why we link it to SA funding. I think it's just so important. I wouldn't want to diminish the importance of it. I'm just, I'm trying, I'm not quite sure how to say it, but I think you understand what I'm saying. It's, it's, it's just, it's so important, we would do it regardless.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
I think, I think to, to your point, Rob, we're not, we're not advocating for this only because we have a temporary grant opportunity. It's something we had, had, had our eye on. It certainly helps to pave the path to get multiple things implemented, I think, at the same time, right? So additional resources certainly have helped us to accelerate, I think, a timeline for being able to address a number of different areas that you, you see here. But, but candidly, we, we would not bring this to you if it were not something that we perceive to have great value and impact for our students.
I believe that as well. Thank you. That's all.
I have one. Thank you, Chris. My question, I'm going to look at you. There we go. My question for you is whether the district has considered some sort of integration of restorative circle practices to strengthen these goals, particularly the behavioral wellness and emotional wellness at the EC5 level, such that when our students grow through our schools and reach high school, restorative practices will be well-known and understood?
Yeah, so we have certainly considered that. We're not at an, at an implementation phase at the elementary level. Myself and Dr. Kyle, with our behavioral specialists and emotional wellness coordinators, know that that is a, a next step that, that we want to be at full implementation at. So certainly our eye is on that.
Any other questions or comments?
I have some. Sorry. So the relationship building, when you want each student to have a connection with, a one-on-one connection with an adult, how do you ensure that? Do you make sure that every student has that connection?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in, in this factor, right, the goal is to ensure that, right? But certainly when we have surveyed our students, some, we, some of our schools have 90%, 91%, 88%. And then the goal around this is to develop or have a student have an authentic relationship. So we had a lot of talk about when our students say no, right? What's our process then for connecting with students? And so knowing that we want it to be authentic and genuine, we really then rely on our teams of teachers at our buildings, right? So a few strategies. Here's one example. Our, our professional learning communities, our groups of teachers will get together and look at our students that have said, no, I don't have a trusted adult. And they will actually say, all right, do any of us know anything about student A? And does anybody feel that they have a path to naturally connect with them? One person may say, I'll, I'll own that student, okay? I'm going to be proactive in trying to connect with that student. Another strategy may, may be, hey, they're interested in this, let's try and steer them into a club and activity. So it is more of after we get that information, a more, how do we naturally try and engage a student, especially at the high school level? Our high school folks that were on, on the committee that built that really felt strongly that if we try to, try to smash an unauthentic relationship to a child, it's only going to backfire. So the goal is always to ensure that, and I think that's a process that's just ongoing.
So you have already asked students, surveyed students, do you feel you have a one-on-one connection or, like, that's something that's already?
Yeah, so at, at our secondary level this year, yes. In past years, that was one of our key strategies at the elementary level. We didn't mandate it this year, but at our secondary level, we did do this this year. Yep. And as we move into next year, it will be a part of our, our full process again.
And then with, so, thank you. The suicide prevention, the, the programming that went on for the ninth graders this year, was that in-person or via Zoom?
Yep, we did it for both. So at ninth grade, we did it for both. So when we designed it, we had an in-person experience, and then we also, for all of our students, students that were streaming in, we did it for them as well, and then did the follow-up as well, both in-person and virtually.
And so you have, do you have ongoing screening throughout the year periodically, or is it?
Yeah, so this, the, the signs of suicide program is a, a one-time program where there's a lesson and then a screener and then a follow-up if need be, right? As far as universal screening, that would fall underneath our learning plan next year. We have elementary schools and middle schools that will pilot universal, ongoing SEL screening with a goal to the following year have full implementation of full, universal SEL screening. That's a, now that screening is much different than the signs of suicide programming, though. It focuses on our SEL pillars and some risk factors.
So at the secondary level, is there any annual screening for students that, you know, are, do you feel you need to reach out to someone? Like just some, some sort of touching base with each student, whether it be through, you know, an access class survey or something that, you know, if they needed to connect with someone or they were, you know, caring?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think as we move into next year, you'll have kind of two pieces. You'll have at one time in the year, you'll have your signs of suicide programming, and at another time, you'll have your trusted adult survey piece. So at this point, I mean, we feel like those two pieces are giving us input or a kid's opportunity to tell us that they need to connect with us.
On the behavior wellness, where it says district-wide behavior specialists, who are those?
Yeah, yeah. So at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level, we have always had behavioral specialists district-wide that support students that may have significant behavioral needs, whether they be in one of our instructional or special education programs, or students that may be in our general education programs. Those specialists support those students' needs, but just as important, they support our teachers as they work with students. And part of their role is to impact behavioral wellness across the district as well. So we have them at the elementary, middle, and high school level.
And then I think Angela got at the heart of the second question I was going to ask, but you know, I'm concerned about kids as they're going back to school. It's been a rough, I mean, it's been a rough year plus for everybody, but a lot of change, a lot, and I'm just concerned about kids. And I just wonder, will there be a increase in emphasis on identifying, on, on identifying those issues, on drawing kids out, you know, maybe with these, the new positions, doing a little more early?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you. I hear you both. I think that, I absolutely think that can come in two ways. I think I've highlighted two strategic ways. There may be others as well, right? I also think an organizational focus or a school-wide focus, just in the same awareness that you're communicating, aligning our teachers with our mental health specialists, making sure that there is that awareness as, as we attempt to connect with every student. So I've spoken about two strategic ways, but I don't want to discount the, the heightened need for us to be aware of that, but also to provide all these different experiences as well, to make sure we're connecting and seeing kids in multiple forms.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's a, it's a really difficult ask, right? With 12,500 kids and, and really just a handful of people who specialize in that piece of it. So it's like you said, it's really got to be district-wide, but it's just, I mean, especially the middle school and high schools, those are turbulent times anyway for adolescents. But now, you know, as they get back in, there's probably going to be all kinds of issues of getting re-acquainted, interacting with others, and, but I just worry about the undiagnosed piece, the kids that are, that are quiet, that are struggling.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you. And what I would say is, I actually do believe it is every one of our staff members' responsibilities, though, to be tuned into that, right? So part of the reason why relationships are the key part of our framework is because no matter who you are in our organization, your number one job is to connect with students. You never know when you could be that person for that kid, and we've talked about it in our trains, our leaders believe in that. So we, our teachers believe in that. So truthfully, while there are those specialists, it is all of our jobs to shepherd that, right? That's our greatest responsibility, and that's a, that's a belief we have. So while that's not a, a structured approach, I believe culturally that that will do a lot for our kids as well.
Chris, can I mention just one other thing too, worth mentioning? So you also have a, a risk-to-harm, risk-of-harm-to-self-orothers protocol that's always at play. So again, like two, two avenues that bring information forward. One are the proactive, across-the-system strategies that Chris is talking about, but the whole point of building that one-on-one relationship is to recognize that there are a million points of interaction across a school day and a school year with students. And so when we recognize points of concern, there is a standing protocol that allows, so I think, Angela, to your question, we're always doing, I shouldn't say always doing, but, but there's always a protocol that stands ready to work a student through a risk-of-harm process if there's any indicator that, that there's a concern point. So I think we reach out proactively. We also respond to what it is that students are telling us, telling their parents. Reminder, you have a system that actually sits on top of your technology systems that also monitors and flags keywords that may appear in email and documents that students are typing. So there are a lot of points that can kind of pull out input to tell us we may have, have a need, and that's, you know, I think two years ago, that risk-of-harm process was, was kind of refocused so that we have a very structured process when that concern point comes forward to work a student through that.
Any other questions?
I think I missed what the, the student supervisor at the high school is.
Yeah, the student supervisor is with the addition of the clubs and activities at the high school level. You're bringing a larger influx of students into the building. So this is for post 215 through the, through the evening hours to make sure we're managing students within the building. One for each high school as they're coming to their transportation, not wandering the hallways, making sure safety is adhered to, all those different pieces. So the recommendation for both of our high schools as we expand programming is to make sure we have supervision, at least one person in each building.
Thank you, and I love the idea of the activity bus for the high schools. I think that's really huge for kids who don't have that access.
Thank you.
You may need two per high school, but.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the recommendation is actually two per school.
Oh, it is two per?
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. I think this all is fantastic for next year. I'm wondering about, because we have heard a lot about, you know, kids are struggling, parents are struggling, and I think there is even some parent-child struggling, you know, that, just identifying what's really going on. And I'm wondering if, and I, as we go in, as we implement these programs next year, that is, does any kind of expectation need to be set? I don't know if I'm going to say this quite right, but with our parents around the actual curriculum that happens in the classroom, because there may be some extra time in the classroom that is spent on relationship building. And I know you can do that while you're teaching your curriculum, but I'm just wondering if, will there be some time? And I, and I'm not saying that in any way this is a bad thing, but I'm just wondering, will there be some classroom time used to, to address some of these SEL issues with building these relationships and whether it be, you know, icebreakers or, you know, question of the day, like what's everyone's, I don't know, favorite color? You know what I mean? Just something that builds those relationships and trust with kids and teachers that isn't math, science, English. Do you, does that, my question makes sense?
Yeah, no, it makes, it makes great sense. You know, and, and great point, I would, so I'm going to attempt to respond to that by level, you know, at the elementary level. One of the opportunities that was taken away from us a bit this year was the opportunity, most of our schools attack some of their SEL work by doing packs across their school in common intersection of kids to make sure that they're connected. And so those were things that were already taken away from the instructional day, but we knew that had great impact on learning still, right? We're looking forward to re-implementing those, and I don't think that those things will be foreign to our parents, I really don't. Still within the school day, as we've expanded now to a full day, our teachers are now finding time to carve out those classroom meeting times, and a lot of those still didn't even go away as we were in-person, right? At the middle school level, you saw some of our middle schools over the past couple of years going to blocks where they could allow teachers time to connect with kids. I think plans are in place as we move into next year to rethink some of those pieces as well. But I would also say that some of our most dynamic learning experiences for our kids that are happening in our classrooms, from some of the places where we're getting some of the greatest growth, are teachers that are doing just what you just described at the high school level. They're taking time upfront at the beginning of the day, and I've seen it here in, in our high school classrooms, our teachers that take time to get to know kids, to joke around with kids, to take five, 10 minutes to talk with them at the front end, they're not missing out on that curricular time. They're actually enhancing it because the kids are more connected. So I think that the message needs to be, we're always focusing on relationships. We're, we're continuing to do that, and I, I believe, I do, I actually believe learning will be enhanced because of that. So that would be my message.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, I just, I just, you know, could see possibly getting some emails be like, you know, the, whatever, choose your subject teacher, you know, spend 15 minutes a day just talking about the news or, you know, whatever. And if anything, you know, people are like, why aren't they teaching their subject? You know, and so I just want to set, that's what I mean by setting the expectation that there's, maybe there's going to be some, you know, might be a little bit more relationship building now, but to your point, that makes the instruction stronger and easier for kids to consume.
Susan, one, one quick, just example of, I think, exactly what you're talking about. When we were at Franklin, I think visiting over at Franklin a couple of weeks back on one of our building visits, so I think some of our middle school teachers found when, when concurrent instruction was going on, they had to do something different at the front of the period to bring everybody into the classroom, right? You had some kids in front of you, some online, and so, you know, at least at, at that particular building, the teachers kind of designed this like bell activity to just always bring everybody right away. everybody right away into the lesson. And I think they found so much value and success in the interaction that it was created, that even as everybody then has come back now, they still do it, right? In-person, they still do that, you know, one to two men. In fact, we had a chance to, uh, to participate in, in one of them. And, and I, it's exactly what you're talking about. And, and again, I'll come back to, uh, uh, teachers do that, right? I think they do that. And, and I think part of the learning strand is, is probably Dr. Sloggy just continuing as he does to give teachers reminders that that time is well-spent, right? That, that a few minutes focused on that relationship building and, and really getting to know kids. And more importantly, allowing them to get to know each other in natural ways, I think, can have significant impact on a classroom and is necessary in the fall.
Yeah. No, and I, I just want to be clear. I fully support that. I just want to, you know.
I hear the concern. We just, we want to make sure we're setting expectations.
Right, exactly. Um, and then my other piece, um, question is, um, is staff, because obviously the, we're relying on our wonderful, amazing teachers to do all these things and be, you know, aware of what's going on with their kids. And, but this has been a brutal year for our teachers as well. And, and I'm just wondering, is that, you know, though, and I know we have done a lot for, you know, to try to support our teachers. And, um, you know, I just want to make sure, are we gonna continue things like the employee assistance program and providing support to our teachers so that they are, that they are emotionally strong and present to be able to help our students? Because I, I know all of our teachers want to be able to do that, but they're all very drained too from this year. So I just wanna acknowledge that and, you know, make sure that those supports continue for our teachers.
Really, so, uh, again, culturally through your school, that's, that's, that happens organically in one sense, but then strategically also, we've, you know, knew as we went into this work last summer that, um, this was gonna be a challenging year. So we trained all of our administrators on the tenants of positive psychology and how that could be integrated into their schools to support staff. Um, we then brought that training back in December for our staff. Um, and then some of you I know were able to attend, um, our staff support training session where Dr. Bolton led our staff through some of the training at the elementary level. So, uh, we've done on the training side, but then the other side is just the recognition and how, uh, there's awareness at the building to support staff. Because there's a lot of research that when our staff are emotionally intelligent, that transcends to kids as well. So.
Fantastic. And then lastly, um, I'm also really excited to see the activity buses. Um, my question and I fully support it again, but I just wanna ask the question, I think we were talking about this pre-pandemic, about the idea of bringing the activity buses back. So I'm, and I know at that time, um, it, what you were looking at was whether or not the, the need was there for the students, if we had enough students to take the bus, just based on, you know, some have jobs, some have family, um, uh, responsibilities that they need to get to, or, you know, for various things. And so I'm just wondering, is it, did we determine there was the need? Or is it kind of, if we provide it, they will come?
Yeah, no, we, we, we had determined that it was a need. I think candidly, uh, Dr. Sloggy had done a, a survey with our high schools right before the pandemic started. So you would have seen this recommendation for the current school year had pandemic and the altered end to last year, uh, not have happened, you, you would have, you would have seen this recommendation a year ago.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much.
But I, that is one that, that I will tell you that, um, uh, we, we, we will, we will monitor it. I mean, at the end of the day, I, I, I agree, we, you know, the, the sense is that that's one of the impediments toward some students being able to participate. But we, we want to make sure we see that. Obviously, if we're running activity routes and over time, nobody is using them.
Right.
You know, we, we, we don't want to continue to invest resources because those resources can go elsewhere. So that's one that we're, that we're gonna put in place and continue to monitor that it's truly being used.
Yep.
So that, uh, we, we decide if we want to keep it in the long term.
You know, to follow up on that, if students were staying after school to get help or maybe peer tutoring, or even just to do homework with a friend, could they ride the activity bus home?
They, they can. That be, that's just, just to recognize, um, to, to be honest, one of the limitations of an activity bus, what that does is kind of puts everybody onto a schedule where if you're gonna have one bus that's serving multiple opportunities, sports practices, after-school homework help, all of those activities have to end around the, the same time. And, and so that, you know, that, that kind of starts to put some, uh, a box or some parameters around, um, certain things. But so the short answer to your question is yes. The, the reality though, is that there will probably be some different release times of activities. So it may not be fully practical in some situations for a student, but it'd be available. So.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Sloggy?
I do. Um, regarding the, um, signs of suicide prevention programming, um, I asked this question recognizing it could be very difficult to implement. However, have students who have experienced suicidal ideation been invited to co-create the content of the signs of suicide preventative programming? Or has their feedback following participation in these programs been solicited?
So has their, has their feedback regarding their participation in the program been solicited? I don't believe it has, as of yet. I will tell you though, we just completed our first, our, our first launch of that recently. So, um, I don't believe it has, but I can, I can certainly find out.
So there, there, we have not yet asked students who may be suffering or have suffered from suicidal thoughts or tendencies, whether this kind of content is helpful?
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand the question. So this, a student who is identified in it, have we asked them, has it been helpful? So, um, what I will tell you is, uh, any student who was identified, we fully carried out through our risk of harm processes, our full process, um, specific to ask, was this actual, the content helpful? Um, I would assume that that was a part of it, but I don't want to speak for the counselor and therapist that carried out that risk of harm process, uh, for that individual student.
I'm just, to clarify, the question is just about that program that was available to all high school students, not just those who have needed assistance in that way though.
Yeah. Mary, can you clarify what, what your, tell me a little bit more about what you're thinking with the question?
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask whether, so for, not for the protocol for risk of self, harm to self or others, but for the programming that's made available for, for very good, obvious reasons to all students, that is, participating and making sure that our community is safe and well. I'm just wondering if there's been student voice in the creation of the content of that program?
So I, two, two things, I guess. And, and, uh, Dr. Sloggy can add to it. One, um, it, it is a program. So a lot of the content for how that gets carried out has actually been developed by experts, obviously, in the, the space, where I think there is probably more of what, what you're talking about is the benefit of the emotional wellness coordinator in the, in the building, is that emotional wellness coordinator is now carrying, let's say a caseload of 20 to 30 students that they've worked with, to understand, A, what works? What have they learned through the experience of working directly with, with students that, that, you know, can help us as they continue to, to support? So I mean, I guess there's not quite as much input from students in the design of that one-day experience, but in how we use what comes from that experience to have impact with students as we support them. Because I, I think, you know, the, some, some students just need, out of that experience, just need somebody to talk to. And, and there aren't the significant risk indicators that, um, perhaps there's, there's, there's a true risk of harm. Some have gone all the way through that risk of harm because, you know, there are indicators are in fact the plan. And, and so, so I think it's probably, probably more in that, but.
Yeah, no, you answered it. Yeah, the content piece does come, you know, as a research-based program with some of the content piece. So no, I would agree. That's sure.
Thank you. A totally different question, a quick one, is based on what we know about student belonging, is there a possibility of more sports becoming no-cut sports? So we don't have to exclude a student from, say, baseball, just because they don't meet a particular athletic ability?
The task force that was meeting around expanding clubs and activities did talk about, uh, furthering the conversation into next year around sports versus activities. So there was certainly a desire to continue that conversation from the group. We have a task force in place, which is a good thing. Um, but at this point in the year, we felt the recommendation coming forward just around activities and clubs certainly has its coming in the springtime. But there was discussion about that, and that task force did say they wanted to continue that conversation. Again, that team is made up of administrators and teachers and athletic directors, actually at the middle school level, so, and our activities directors. So, uh, that was a part of our conversation, and Dr. Kyle and I both co-led that, that work. So I'm certain that conversation will continue.
I just, I just have one more. Um, this refers to the slide on mindset, um, recognizing that significant research indicates the possibility of implicit bias and, which means that teachers may claim to believe that all students can grow and learn at high levels, but might miss the possibility of implicit bias, might have assumptions that are contrary to that belief. What kinds of work would you do to address that possibility?
Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, Carol Dweck will, will say that. She'll say, uh, mindset means nothing if you don't get past your biases, right? And so thanks for recognizing that. Um, and the work around that is to, uh, keep our conversations going that we've had in equity, right? So that's why we committed to our, our equity professional learning pro, uh, plan that had implicit bias recognition throughout it, right? Um, one thing that we learned and that was spoken to all of our teachers was, uh, the first piece, when we have to recognize our biases, but then we have to give our kids more time, give ourselves more time, um, and not, uh, rush through our day when we see our biases kick in. So, um, we, we certainly have a plan in place professionally, you know, through our equity side of it, but that's not a one-and-done plan either, right? That's gotta be continuous work that we have. So, um, you're right in recognizing that, and that's why not just one singular strategy works, right? And that's, and to be honest, if I go back to our emotional wellness, that's why I've got that third bullet point there, is that this is where our knowledge, training, and expertise to connect has to kick in, draw in our training, draw in our knowledge from our previous trainings, whether it's our trauma-informed, our implicit bias training, what are the things that we're doing to kind of combat or recognize our biases?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. I love all this, um, especially the emotional wellness component of it. I, my only criticism is, this is all next year, and I think we're missing an opportunity this summer to do some kind of transition, you know, with 30 or, I don't remember where we left the number, 30 or 40% of our students learning remotely, especially at the high school, in the virtual academy. I would love to see the schools try to do more this summer to draw in those kids. Maybe there's, maybe there's, maybe it's part of another conversation, but.
Uh, not, not part of another conversation, it's actually happening. So do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize for not putting it directly in here. I tried to just focus on some of the future pieces for next year. But actually, at each level, uh, we have, uh, some plans and processes for August to be that time for that to happen. So, um, at the elementary level, uh, all of our schools will be, are, are developing plans right now actively. We just met with the group, um, twice over the past couple of weeks around, uh, bringing our VA students into the school for a soft opening prior to the school year occurring. Um, and so that's gonna happen in a few different structures. We're giving some buildings some autonomy on that, but are also gonna support it with funding as well. Uh, we have a meeting with our middle school principals, uh, next week to discuss those same plans. And then at the high school level, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Kyle or Mrs. Murphy to chime in here too, we, uh, are, are planning not only on bringing our freshmen in, but our sophomores in as well, because there are some, our schools recognize, recognize that we have some sophomores that have not been in our buildings altogether. And so some summer work and, and some early stuff is being dedicated to them as well.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick, uh, questions and comments. Um, I wrote down, and I just want to make sure I have it correctly, that the trusted adult relationship mapping, that's gonna be involved in SIP programs? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's what Zimkowski and I have talked about, having that be the main component of our SEL plan and really, uh, making sure that that's aligned to our data systems district-wide, right? So we obviously have the survey tool, uh, created, and our buildings have gotten that data. But we want to make sure that it, we think it's just an easy step to jump over to make that a part of our SIP work. So it's just aligned, and we're using one district-wide strategic data gathering tool. So if we can have a central source for it, it will empower our, our, our buildings and really just allow them easier access to student data.
So school improvement plans?
Thank you.
Are we, um, and I, I, I believe that's kind of what Mrs. Booton was looking at, was more about the explicit teaching of SEL. Are we doing and implementing any of that into our clubs and extracurricular opportunities? Anything that's specific for more explicit? Because they're in those social experiences? Are we looking at that? Or is that just gonna come kind of organically through the?
Yeah, um, right now, our plan is, uh, to, to teach that through our scope and sequences that we've, that we've applied in, in our general education settings. So we see that one avenue for the direct teaching of skills, whether it's our wellness series at our high school, or our full scope and sequence at our elementary school that we, that's complemented by second step. We see that as the direct teaching mode. And that conversation hasn't happened because we've seen the club or the activity piece has the natural, organic piece. Now, the, the opportunity that I think for direct teaching that would apply there is probably the more teachable or coachable moment that should occur, in my opinion. I think that's where the world of direct teaching and the experience combine for the, for the growth of the skill.
I guess what I was, I was kind of looking at is, is say, say, for example, there is a target at a specific grade level, and, and they're focusing on that skill that grade level year, will some of that carry over into the after-school opportunities just to apply? You know, you know, we can, we can teach, you know, teach it within, but to have those opportunities to apply, will that, you know, like, like this is our, these are our goals this year, so we do carry those over into our extracurricular opportunities?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great point. And I think, uh, I, yeah, I hear you. And I think there's probably an opportunity, if we are more clear and vigilant around our scope and sequences and where particular grade levels are at, that could apply to some of our club supervisors, or some of the folks that are leading some of those opportunities to capitalize on it.
And so my last question is in regards to our coaches, you know, sometimes our, our coaches are not, um, you know, they, they, they come in just to, to do the coaching. And what kinds of training have they had in some of this, in some of our SEL practices so that, you know, they can, you know, they're, they're a big part of relationship building? And so are we offering any opportunities for them for training?
Yeah, uh, not anything separate than the implicit bias training, the trauma-informed training, the relationship training that all District 200 staff members have had over the course of the past two years, which, um, we think is pretty, pretty powerful pieces. So, uh, what I would say is, I think that those three pieces focus on, um, being aware of the adverse experiences that kids have gone through, being sensitive to them, uh, being aware of their own bias, and how that could begin in the way of connecting with kids. Um, so that they've been through those, but have we said, coaches, you're going through a separate training? Not to my knowledge.
So, and then as we bring in, I know this is a big year of retirements, and as we bring in new staff, those opportunities to get them brought up to speed will be happening as well?
Yes. Yeah, so the good part about this work and, um, is that we have teams, right? We use the train-the-trainer model. So, um, both on the equity learning side and on the relationship side, trauma-informed side, are, every school's got a team that they can activate to bring those trainings forward. And because we've built them, we can put them right back in front of people as, as we re-bring people into, to District 200.
Thank you, because without this framework, the academics really struggle without having a strong SEL framework. So thank you. Mrs. Murphy's up next with student learning feature.
Good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again about our learning acceleration plan. Um, I am just gonna note, I apologize, an updated copy of one of your supplemental documents didn't make it into your folder this evening, so Mrs. Layak now is providing you that copy right now. right now. I have presented our learning acceleration plan two other occasions to the Board of Education. So I first presented our plan in February, and then in April, I provided an update to that plan. At the April meeting, Dr. Salagi and I proposed a number of positions that we recommend expanding because they have been successful and impactful within our district, and we proposed utilizing our federal relief funding for those positions. So tonight, I'm going to provide you with budget allocations associated with those specific positions. I do have four guiding questions for our presentation this evening. First, what federal grant allocations will District 200 receive through the COVID-19 pandemic relief legislation? Second, what are District 200's priorities for utilizing federal funds? Third, how will the federal funds allow District 200 to expand opportunities for students and educators in the future? And fourth, what are the possibilities for federal funding if it, if it is no longer available? So we'll start with our first question. Here, the board will see a slide that was presented at our last meeting, and it outlines the three federal funding opportunities that are available to District 200. First was SRR1, and that was authorized through the CARES Act, and we applied for that grant and submitted our application in July of 2020. The funds associated with that grant provided a lot of opportunities for our students and staff this year specifically with technology, with also supporting our students in additional opportunities after school. It provided a lot of opportunities for us to work with staff over the summer months. The second funding application is with SRR2, and that was authorized through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. That application has been made available in March. We're currently working on finalizing our, but our application for SRR2 to submit very soon. And the third opportunity will be ARP-SRR, and that application we anticipate receiving in July. There is an additional requirement with ARP-SRR, and is, that is that 20% of the total allocation does need to go to address learning loss specifically. So moving into our second guiding questions, what are the District 200's priorities for the federal funds? We do have six priorities, and they are outlined here. We did look at this at our last meeting. These are in a specific order, so our first priority is around full-time return to school. Our second priority is around our learning acceleration plans. The third priority is around the social-emotional learning supports. Priority four is technology. Priority five, curriculum materials. Priority six, facilities. This evening, we're focusing in on priorities two and priorities three specifically. So how will the federal funds allow District 200 to expand opportunities for students and educators in the future? We've outlined five positions that would specifically support our learning acceleration plan. The first two do relate to math. The board may remember that we do have a number of additional supports in the area of reading at our elementary level and our middle school level. We do not have that same level of support in the area of mathematics. At the elementary level, your Title I buildings currently have a math interventionist, a .5 math interventionist. We're looking to expand that opportunity to all schools. At the middle school level, we're proposing a math coach/interventionist to support the learning acceleration of plans at all middle schools. The high school academic intervention coordinator is a new position from the last time we presented, and this was a proposal from our high schools. They're, they see a need for having a specific coordinator to oversee academic interventions for students, a specific point person, and the intention of this would be that this person would really work closely in collaboration with our emotional wellness coordinators and our behavioral specialists, almost as a team or a triad. Then we have the elementary curriculum leaders. This would be two teachers on assignment to support the curricular work district-wide and professional development needs that we have addressed for our learning acceleration plans. And finally, is the proposed elementary innovative and tech and learning coordinator. Right now, we have one individual who supports all middle schools and all elementary schools. So the proposal here is for a position that does support elementary buildings. For the social-emotional learning supports, these four items actually are related directly to the presentation you just heard from Dr. Salagi. So the middle school emotional wellness coordinators, the student clubs and activity stipends, high school activity bus, and high school student supervisor. At this point, I wanna draw your attention to two documents that you have. One is, is yellow-colored and one is white-colored. So these are the two budget documents associated with SRR2 funding and ARP-SRR. I would note, they do say draft at the top, but I will orient you to the way that they are organized. So the first column is the budgeted item, the second with the description of the item, and then you'll see three fiscal years, each with the budgeted amount for that item. You'll also see it's organized by the learning, or the different priorities that we have identified for the federal relief funds. And specifically, draw your attention to, to the white document. That is where you will see those positions that are proposed, and those are underneath the learning acceleration section and also the SEL section. So our final guiding questions, what are the possibilities when the federal funding is no longer available? So the draft budget includes positions that are being funded over a three-year period. The administration will continue to monitor the impact of these positions and provide updates to the Board of Education. At the conclusion of each year, and especially in fiscal year 24, there's a few options. First, it may be determined that these positions are no longer necessary. Second, it may be determined that the impact is significant, and administration may recommend other reductions to continue to fund these positions. At this time, I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Murphy?
Can I just, I'm sorry, Dave, just one more. That's okay, you're fine, I'm so sorry. But, so again, let me just, just orient you to a couple pieces in the, in the document. So look first at the yellow sheet of paper, the SRR2 grant. Every item that's in the SRR2 grant, you're gonna see as a one-time expenditure, meaning it has a fiscal year where that expenditure happens, and that does not carry forward to future fiscal year, right? So we really looked at and evaluated that grant truly targeting one-time expenditures. You go over to the, the white piece of paper to the ARP-SR dollar, if you look specifically at the two center sections, learning acceleration and SEL, you'll note that the same expenditure carries forward three fiscal years with a slight increase because there are staff costs that are going to have an escalator. So specifically to Mr. Hamlin's question at the last meeting, that's the, that's the pot of dollars that when we get out to what will be fiscal '25, so the '24-'25 school year, that's the point where, assuming that these programs are adding value, we will need to absorb them into, to our budget. And again, I don't take that lightly, but if you look at those combined in the aggregate at about $1.7 million, that's about 1% of our budget. So, and, and again, not nominal dollars, but in the grand scheme of a budget, 1% I think is a cost that you can look at that point to kind of reallocate in terms of other expenditures in the budget. So we were incredibly mindful, you know, just from my perspective, if we were looking at $3 million, $4 million in recurring expenses, I think you would legitimately have a cliff at the end of the, the grant funding where you'd have a problem. We really tried to be mindful in, in recognizing that by design, especially in, in the ARP grant, 20% has to target learning recovery needs or learning acceleration needs, and so you're only gonna do that through, through pieces, but, but that's really kind of that section we're, we're talking about. So I just wanted to make sure it probably was clear to you, but I wanted to make sure that's explicitly clear in the document and how you're looking at it. And the last piece, that top section, where you see the costs that are associated with virtual academy, those are estimates at this point, right? We are not gonna know what it costs to operate a virtual academy next year until we have firm student numbers, and so candidly, that's a pretty conservative estimate right now 'cause we didn't wanna miss on the wrong side. If it does not cost us a million and a half to operate a virtual academy next year, then that will free up dollars that candidly can be used elsewhere, and, and, you know, our, our recommendation around that would be, if you, if you kind of look at the back, we're actually carrying a facilities allocation basically in year one and year two, and I think whatever we don't use in that first column can carry over into probably a year three of facilities, which would give you a chance to kind of finalize the, the ramp of Sherman-Durges. So that's a lot, but just to kind of anchor you in that, that thought.
Dave, I knew you had started.
The first thing is on the fiscal year headings, it always get a little confusing, but that's really the, when the school year ends. Fiscal year '21 is 2021, right?
Correct, that's a current year, so you are currently in fiscal year '21.
Yeah. And then related to the, the comment you just made about the Sherman-Durges piece, are these facility dollars intended to be in addition to our $7 million we target to spend every year, or will we spend that $7 million plus this?
No, this would, this would, your, your total spend on capital, $7.2 million, would incorporate that number.
Okay.
So this is not spending beyond...
Okay.
7.2.
And I'm not, I'm not even saying that's necessarily a bad thing, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, it, it's in the, kind of the traditional concept, come back to your funding ramp around facilities, you're utilizing grant dollars to support what would have been fund balance expenditure. So this is allowing you to avoid the, the use of, of drawing from fund balance to complete that ramp. Instead, you're gonna draw from grant dollars, which again, separate conversation, but is gonna give you some additional...
Yeah.
Flexibility on how you approach other facilities work if you're not drawing down from fund balance in the immediate.
Yeah, I mean, said another way, it's a little over $3 million on the two documents, that's $3 million out of that $21.6 that we're funding this way instead of out of fund balance or other decisions.
Correct.
So that's a good thing. And then the last thing I had, the 20% learning loss, we're well above that 'cause that's what the learning acceleration...
Correct.
Is, so, okay, thank you.
I just want, thank you, Dave, for that, that was my first question too, about the Sherman-Durges, and I think that's fantastic, and that, I mean, could that potentially help us to fund, if we were, needed to, like, in the '24-'25 year, that, to offset that, so we have that for a later use to fund these teaching positions? Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, oh, yes, I hear what you're saying. It could, yeah. So again, certainly, you know, as you get out to, to that year, I will kind of direct you back to, we've set a consistent target at $7.2 million a year for capital funding, but if, and at some point, we probably oughta kind of go through a re-education on Sherman-Durges, the formula itself, and how that calculation works, because as you continue to invest in your facilities, it will reset elements of that formula that over time may indicate that as you catch up, you might be able to make some adjustment in what that annual need would be. So I, I think that's kind of what you're getting at, possibility, yes.
Right, yeah, okay. And then, I guess the other thing that I had written down on that topic too, as far as being able to fund these after fiscal year '24, is to, from both the state and federal levels, just to continue to advocate, 'cause I have a feeling, I would guess, most school districts are going to see a tremendous use of this money and these dollars, and how much it can impact our schools in a positive way, and to use these next three years to, really to continue to advocate at both the state and federal level to keep these funding dollars in our, you know, in state and federal budgets. And, I mean, we all know Illinois is basically last in funding schools, and, you know, federal, I feel could do a better job too at funding our public schools. So I guess that would be just my comment, it was more of a comment there that, you know, to continue to advocate for just increased funding of public education on all levels. So I, I think this is all fantastic, and I'm really excited that we're using these dollars the way that we are, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll comment. I didn't, I wasn't here for the meeting, you actually discussed this, but, you know, I think, I'm thinking three years out, this is the perspective of my question. So I'm gonna assume that these, the learning acceleration, the SEL investment, this $1.8 million is, is gonna be beneficial to us. I have confidence in our team. I know that we're gonna get to that point where we have, you know, you mentioned, cheek and backslide, you mentioned monitor the impact in your second point. I think it's gonna be really important that we have some measurements in place, because when we get to that summer of '24 when we're going through the budget, you know, we're gonna be a different board sitting at, at that point in time. We're gonna wanna have some good data, make decisions about whether we wanna keep that. So, you know, I, I think, so I'm presuming that that's gonna be a positive result, that we're gonna maintain this, so then how does our budget absorb roughly $1.8, $2 million? You know, and I think there's, kind of related to that last priority, and we've talked about it, facilities, I think the facilities committee oughta go back and make kind of a multi-year plan, what we can do, accomplish for the next three years, and then what we might wanna focus on for the three years after that, because we have opportunities through the debt restructuring we did to take advantage of some investments, to make facility improvements and still be able to maintain these things. We think about what Sherman-Durges might be in, in three, three years. So I think there's really a, a strategic planning opportunity between education and the investments, and the finance and the facilities, that, that all this is gonna tie together back in that summer of 2024. So I think that's where we need to be thinking, about how do we get to that and then make that good decision that addresses all three of those issues. So that's just kind of my perspective, thinking kind of at the back end of this. So, no questions, I think it's great.
Anything else?
I have a question. So I'm just curious, I don't see a cost for transportation for elementary and high school kids for the summer.
Elementary, the program that is, that we're utilizing transportation is through our Title I acceleration program, and that would be funded through your Title I grant. At the high school level, we have funds that have been historically allocated for our programming, for transportation programming at the high school summer programs.
Okay.
So those are currently built into district funds. So what we budgeted were opportunities that are expansion opportunities from what we have normally done during the summer.
Okay. So for the elementary students who would qualify for the intensive tutoring, parents would need to bring them to that for the short 45-hour meeting and then...
Correct. We have notified our buildings, if there's families that have difficulty with transportation, we have a elementary program running with special education and the Title III multilingual program that has transportation, that we would, could arrange the student to be transported that way and utilize that facility during that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I just have one question, and I, I know, I know what I asked at last time, but I'm, I'm still a little bit confused. Math coaches and math interventionists, are they two completely different things, or are they the same?
Great question, and I'm going to try my best to help clarify that. So your title buildings have had a 1.0 position that served both roles. It was a .5 math coach, and it was a .5 math interventionist funded through Title I. Every district building had a math coach only. So this opportunity... So this opportunity with the federal relief funding provides us the opportunity to provide math interventionist. So we would continue to have the .5 math coach and we would add to the math interventionist portion. Is that helpful?
It's helpful, but just to clarify, so other, the math interventionist is also doing professional development or are they just doing intervention with students?
They would be focused on interventions with students and the math coach would be focused on the professional development, support of, as a term we used earlier today, tier-one instruction or the classroom core instruction.
So the way I look at a math coach is they're going in and they're co-teaching sometimes within a classroom, but an interventionist may be doing more of a pull-out versus push-in? Is that?
Yes. So the, exactly. And I would just say the math interventionist could also push into the classroom but support very targeted groups of students that identified as needs.
Thank you. There are no other questions. Thank you.
Chris, can I just make one comment on the math coaches? So in the process of the election, I did a little research on our achievement gaps. And if you look at the different subgroups and the change in closure of that gap at the math level corresponds to when we added the math coaches at schools. I just think kind of a testament the fact that it actually works and it's shown actual results. So there's actual data to prove out the fact that that investment three, four, five years ago has had a benefit.
Thank you for sharing that.
Do you wonder, Brad, if putting that in place for reading, sorry?
Say that again?
Putting that in place for reading would
Already, already in place. So actually, we have historically had much more reading intervention, especially at the elementary level for, gosh, a number of years. And actually, glad you asked that question. So there's actually a gentleman out of the University of Illinois Chicago that did a longitudinal study of large unit school districts and actually created kind of a norming structure to look at assessment results over a multi-year period of time, even kind of normed for some of the adjustments in tests. And so one of the findings of his study is that actually District 200, over a window of time where our student demographic changed significantly, actually sustained and increased reading performance over like a 15-year period of time. And candidly, I think a lot of that is attributable to the fact that we do currently, I think we allocate like 20
30, 32
Sorry.
reading specialists in the elementary level.
We have 32 FTE in elementary reading. Up till a year ago, we had a small handful of math support. So we're kind of upping that to kind of bring the two in line.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our discussion items, discussion of updated enrollment projection report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah. So we, again, kind of phased over a couple of meetings. We shared with the board, I think actually two meetings ago, an updated set of projections from Dr. Casarda. So we last did our elementary, not our elementary, we did our enrollment projections across the district in 2017. We've historically updated those projections about every five years. They're generally, the trends are good for about five years. And so we were a little bit early in terms of really looking at updating our enrollment projections on top of that kind of coming out of this COVID year. And I think some fluctuation we've seen in enrollment trends, we're a little bit concerned about where that would be. But the reason why we moved forward with kind of a mini version of the enrollment projection is actually four significant developments in the southern end of the district. So Napier Commons is the development that actually sits inside of Naperville, but is District 200, follows the Whittier-Edison feeder pattern. There are three developments in Warrenville, one along Ferry Road. I forgot the name of that development, Mr. Farley. I don't know if you remember it, the Ferry Road Project. Riverview West. Thank you. That is a Bauer-Hubble feeder pattern. There's a development to the, along 59 and Butterfield would be to the east of Route 59. It's called Everton. Is that right? Thank you. So Everton is also Bauer-Hubble. And then there's a development to the west of 59. I forgot the name of that one. Lexington. And that is Johnson and Hubble. And so given those four developments, we wanted to look at the impact on our enrollment patterns, just to determine proactively if we felt like either this board or future board needed to look at some boundary adjustments. And so the reason why the enrollment projections actually looked at all of the elementary school for that very reason, that if you got to a point you needed to look at boundaries, also wanted to see where some of your capacity sits. So we engaged Dr. Casarda. He actually did his work, got it back to us even quicker than we had anticipated. And you see that in the enrollment projection report. Just by way of reminder, he gives, every time he does a set of enrollment projections, is three series that are part of that. Series B is the as-anticipated projection. So that's the one you really want to focus most of the attention on is, that's the one that would say if all data elements hold true, we would really expect to see Series B. And he has historically been incredibly close on those enrollment projections. Absent some perhaps strange anomaly, we're typically pretty darn close on Series B. The Series A would be, Series A reflects if growth comes in lower, Bill, than expected. And Series C would be if growth comes in more accelerated than expected. So we took this set of enrollment projections. Dr. Slagi and I actually met with all of our elementary principals, our South Side Elementary principals, to look at these projections relative to their current space, ability to accommodate. We're not recommending tonight that you consider any type of boundary adjustment. We do believe that we can accommodate the enrollment projections. As I said, again, I think we need to watch that very carefully. So every development has a projected student yield, but sometimes those yields come in slightly different than perhaps, you know, what is projected. So we will still need to monitor it closely. But as a proactive strategy, we're not recommending that you do any type of boundary study. They've come in at a place where I think we can absorb them. So, Dr. Slagi, anything you want to add to that from the conversation with principals?
No, I think you summarized it well and would just confirm that our principals looked at this pretty closely and have a firm grip on their enrollments and felt comfortable with where they're at and are in tune to where they could go as well.
One little, I think, nuance in conversation though that we have had. So the two buildings that I do think we'll have to continue to watch most closely over time would be Whittier and Bauer. So Whittier, while we do feel okay with where the enrollment numbers will sit, it will be the one that will be a little bit closer in terms of space. I do think that there's an opportunity over the next 12 months for us to look at Whittier and Bauer. So one of the things that obviously does happen with development is that there are developer donations that come in with the development. And those donations do specifically have to target improvement in the targeted attendance zone, right? So if a development sits inside of Whittier and Edison, Whittier-Edison South, when those developer donations come in, they need to target improvements in that service area in terms of increasing capacity. I think one of the things that we've begun to look at is in a couple of those buildings, we're using regular-sized instructional spaces to serve some of our targeted interventions. So we may have a full-size classroom that is accommodating a couple of English learner teachers, a couple of reading intervention staff, or a couple of special education staff. And I think there's an opportunity to perhaps look at those buildings and how we target the donations, to do some redesign perhaps inside the library learning center or the building itself to actually create some small group instructional space that provides a little bit more flexibility, just so that over time, the reality in an elementary building is in any given year, you could be up one section, down one section, up two sections, and you want to have a little flexibility so that we're not in a spot where if we happen to have a year where there's a bubble and we go up a couple of sections, that we're having to either relocate a special service program or, you know, or kind of figure out some other type of cabin send. So that's one thing, we're not necessarily recommending the boundary adjustment, but I think there is an opportunity in the facility space to start there and look at perhaps how we use some of those developer donations to target some small group space that I think would also give us some flexibility and candidly be a nice prototype for how we might want to look at that across some of our other buildings. That was one of the targeted projects in the 2017 referendum that we could come back and get a jumpstart on with that funding source.
I'm glad you brought up Whittier. Wasn't there a program at Jefferson, an early childhood program that we house at Whittier, if I recall? We chose to keep at Whittier?
There, we, there was a early childhood program at one time that was at Whittier. It moved over to Longfellow, I think most recently, and is still at Longfellow, I believe.
Correct. Yeah. But there, yeah, there's always been a few Jefferson programs that have had to have been in the past. But it does bring up the indicator that housing special education programs in our schools are a capacity consideration that we looked at as well with this. And that's why Bauer would come into play most notably for this.
Yeah. Whittier is my concern. When I look at 60s, roughly, almost the equivalent of three full classes trying to squeeze into that building. I remember in the past, we've heard from that community about class size, excuse me. We've heard about class size pressures at Whittier in the past. So that's the one that concerns me a little bit. You know, I don't think I want to get into a discussion of boundary issues with our current parents, but when I look at a development like Napier Commons, now that's a big impact on that, excuse me, big impact on that student population. And so that's what I'm very concerned about is kind of that class size issue at Whittier. So I think that's something to keep an eye on as we hear from that development. I don't think you can really expand that building, but in terms of making targeted improvements inside the building to shift programs around, and that's also a pretty major expense.
Can I piggyback on that question? Because when I taught at Whittier, it was a five-section school. I think Melissa was there. It was a five-section school. I'm looking at the, you know, I'm kind of looking at the numbers now. I know we, at one point, we had two mobiles there, but it was close to 650, I think, at our high when we were there. So is it, we don't have the space now because we're housing something else that's there? Is that what it?
Yeah. It's true, Chris, that's true across the district, right? So I think at that window of time you're talking about across the district, our enrollments were substantially higher, but you had less space inside the building being used for targeted intervention programs now across the district. And again, I'll point out, we can pull it back out and share with the board. So when we did in 2017, when we did do the last set of Casarda updates, we did a space utilization study for you that actually showed you across elementary buildings that would be a few years old, but it would show you just how space is being utilized, the number of full-size classrooms being used for core sections, what's being used for special education programs or other intervention programs. And that's increased significantly over that window of time.
So that's what's taking up some of that
Correct. Hundred percent.
Any other questions for Dr. Schuler?
I just have one question. It's more of a general question. I, because I went back and looked at, I still have the enrollment stuff when we looked at it. It's from the January Committee of the Whole of 2020. And one of the suggestions in here was that the enrollment committee continue to meet maybe once a year or something like that. And I'm just wondering, as we move forward with these things, is there, are we going to like get that enrollment committee back together to look at these things or will it be more like this kind of a discussion?
Yeah. This is a great question. We certainly can. I hate to bring a group together simply as an exercise to bring them together. So I think if there's truly like a space utilization need or some aspect of this data you want to confirm with a committee, we'd be happy to pull that group back together. We have taken a little bit of a break just in the
Right.
the pandemic window of time. But we can, we could certainly bring that group together. I just would want to make sure that at a board, if there's something you felt like you needed a broader base of input
Yep.
around, we can bring that group together. I'd hate to do it simply as an exercise of bringing them together at this point.
Yeah, that helps clarify what. The way this was worded, I didn't realize that that's what it was, that the board would want them to look at something specific. I thought it was more just a separate committee to be like, these are some of the enrollment issues that we're facing. What do you think? So that makes sense.
Yeah. And it was. So the origin of that committee was really when we last made a boundary change. So I think probably seven, six, seven years ago, we did make a slight boundary adjustment with Hawthorne Pleasant Hill boundary. And so that committee continued to monitor the impact of that over a couple of years following. And we're also looking at a few of the development impacts. I think now that you have this set of data, I would suggest you just, you continue to monitor that board
Okay.
level. And if you see indicators of perhaps a decision that might be coming up that you want a broader base of input, I think that'd be the time to resurrect that committee.
Right. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay. So attached to the agenda are the written reports, the monthly financial report, FOIA report, the board communication log, the citizens advisory committee report, reports from board members. There are no board committee reports. Other reports from board members?
Two quick things. We had the last Equity Task Force meeting before breaking for the summer. I continue to be excited about the direction we're going and getting some really, you know, I feel like good action items and plans. And I see further downward, it says board student groups. I also met with my teacher group and I like if this is a similar kind of thing we're talking about, that's really exciting to me. Because I know when I met with my teacher group last week and just that teacher voice and getting their perspective and, you know, as the relationship develops, as I've been with the same group for a couple of years, it becomes more open. It's just very helpful. So I'm excited about the, whatever board student groups means of the future, I'm excited about that.
I have a couple. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Student Driver Safety Event that was started by two Wheaton North students, Henry and Edward Lidle. And I attended that with my son, who is 15 and just got his permit. And for those who aren't aware, it was an event put on for students to, it was in conjunction with the Wheaton Police Department to, this basically introduced new drivers to the police and how to handle yourself if you're pulled over, what happens if you get in an accident. And it was really a fantastic event. And they had a session in the morning for students who have social or sensory, I'm sorry, communication or sensory issues. So just a little bit different perspective of, you know, impatience and answering a lot of questions. And it was really fantastic. And I think there were about a dozen or so, 12 to 15 kids there in the morning. And I know Mrs. Lidle, I was speaking to her there and she thought there was going to be about double that in the afternoon session. And it was just a really fantastic event. And I hope it's something that we can continue in the future. And thank you to Henry and Edward for putting that together and taking that initiative. It was really fantastic. And then I just wanted to thank Tracy McConaughey at the SSC for all of her work in coordinating the test kit assembly. And I know I and Chris and Chris and former member Jenna, and I'm not sure if the other ones, I didn't see there. There was a lot of time to do it, but it was, there was really a great team effort of assembling all those kits. And I just personally, as a board member, really appreciated the opportunity because I got to meet a lot of people at the SSC and, and just have casual conversation and put, and put faces with names. I hear a lot of these names, but I don't know their faces. So it was just, for me, it was a great experience too. And just, so I just really wanted to give Tracy a shout out there for coordinating all of those sessions of packing the kits and everything. And it was really well done. And so thank you for that. And then I just wanted to also say, I know you brought, at the beginning, thank you to all of our school nurses. I know my son got sick earlier this week, and so we had to go through the COVID process and my older son staying home. And thankfully, he was, he's negative. It's just a massive head cold. But, but I just, I got to go through that process with our school nurses this week at both South and Edison. And I just really want to thank all the nurses. They were really fantastic in, in answering my questions and, you know, when I had to get them the documentation. So I just really want to give them a shout out too, because this has been an extraordinary year and they've really made a huge, huge effort. And so I just want to say thank you for that.
Quick, quick note to the, the board. Actually, I kind of forgot about this because it's been a while. But you might remember, I think about a year and a half ago, we developed some board stationery that we had made down in our, our print shop. So board members, if you ever have a recognition like that, we can certainly send a thank you note on your behalf, whether it be student or staff member that you're recognizing, I think out of some of these board recognitions. I want to make sure we go back to capturing the, those opportunities and just send in a quick note on your behalf to thank whether it be student, staff, community members.
Any other questions or comments on other board reports?
Yeah, I just have one question for Dr. Schuler. The citizens advisory committee, how are we doing with applications for that going into next year?
We, we have lots. I think we ended up with 35 applicants for the, the committee for next year. So that committee is meeting one more time. Their last meeting will be tonight. Per their bylaws, a subcommittee from CAC will come together to review those applicants, look at existing members that are returning and, and attempt to make some recommendations to fill out the committee consistent with kind of the, the stated goal in terms of representation of the, of the community. So, so the good news is we had a lot of applicants. This will probably be the first time we will not be able to accommodate all of the applicants for the, the committee. But we'll, I'll have a better sense of that as soon as we, we know who's returning.
So the CAC membership would be going through those and making recommendations?
A, a subcommittee in the CAC, correct.
Topics for further discussion, we have down board member adopted schools, board student groups. Can we also add to that board committees? So that we, I know we officially put that out there on our website, so we should probably share that at the next, at the next meeting. Are there any board members that have a topic for future discussion they would like to add?
I, I have one. If we can add on, so is it for discussion, to revisit the discussion of the commitment to Virtual Academy for the full year for next year? And then, you know, Mr. Camp, who spoke, I, I think it would be helpful to know the policy regarding playground equipment and how that's funded, and that may overlap with SINE-like funding as well?
Okay. Our next regular board meeting is June 9th here at Hubble at 7:00 PM. I, we have absolutely nobody else here, so we do not have any additional public comment. So there being no further action to come before the board, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Didn't hear who was the second, I'm sorry. This is Booton. We can just do an all voice vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.